Okay, noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I will call this meeting of the Acton Board of Selectmen to order. First on our agenda as always is citizens' concerns. If there's anybody who'd like to discuss briefly any items not on our agenda, please approach your mic. Yes, Tara.
Tara Fredericks, and I want to clarify something. I walked up and introduced myself to John, the new town manager, who I'm really glad he's here. And I said that I led the charge to get him hired, and I want to correct that. I led a charge to get a lot of people to be excited about what he offers the town and what he brings, the skills and background and experience, and I'm really glad he's here. So, my issue tonight is that the town staff, apparently with a small group of people in private meetings, has hired this consultant that's done the survey and is going to present at the Housing Forum. And I just, there was a challenge to me last time I was up here when I was asking questions about this, that I wasn't actually quoting the RFP correctly, so I brought the quotes here. And just take a minute, not even, that this consultant is going to recommend public education materials that communicate the importance of meeting housing needs as it relates to the general economic health of the community, to set the town on a trajectory for future growth, and to find and convince residents who usually do not participate in town affairs so they will vote for the Kelly's Corner rezoning. So I just want people to understand that our tax dollars are being spent to sell a rezoning package. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. I'll note that that is a part of the RFP. People who are interested can read the entire RFP and the entire scope, which is available on DocuShare publicly. Okay, anybody else here for citizens' concerns? All right, seeing none. Start with the chairman's update. So as Tara mentioned, this is the first meeting for our new town manager, John Mangiardi. So welcome, John. He started just over two weeks ago and has been hitting the ground running, and we are all very excited to have him on board. So I hope if you see him in town, you will say hi and make him feel very welcome. And I expect that you will be seeing him at various meetings and other events and things around town, so. A couple upcoming events, as Tara also noted, the Acton Community Housing Corporation is hosting a public forum on housing needs and strategies next Tuesday, July 24th, which will start at 7:30 PM in this room, Room 204 of Town Hall. Next week, the League of Women Voters is also hosting a candidates forum for candidates for both the 3rd Congressional District, which is being vacated by Nikki Sangas, and the 4th Middlesex District being vacated for state representative, which is being vacated by our state rep Cory Atkins, on Monday, July 23rd, at 7:00 PM in the Harvey, at the Harvey Wheeler Center in Concord. This Thursday, July 19th, there will be a performance of the Indian Hill Music Big Band at NARA, starting at 6:30 PM, and there's free admission, so hopefully many people, hopefully it'll be a cooler night, and many people can go enjoy that. And our next regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting will not be until August 3rd, and as is typical, this is our one regularly scheduled meeting in August, so we will potentially be jamming a lot into that, but hopefully meeting only one time that month. All right, so that is all I have. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a quick note of thank you to the board for welcoming me here over the last few weeks, and to all the staff. It's been really great getting to know everyone and the great team that we have here. I've also had a chance to meet a lot of members of the community, which has been a lot of fun, and I look forward to continuing to do that. So please make an appointment to come see me, or just stop by. I'd love to meet you in here, hear your story. So in terms of updates, there's only one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, that's the goal-setting meeting that we've set for later this month. I'm in the process now of working with staff to identify or prepare a brief list of, sort of a recap of the goals from the past year. And I'm also seeking their input from the staff level for goals and objectives for us, or for you to consider when you do your goal-setting later this month. So I'll have that for you that night.
Great, all right. Thank you very much, John. Okay, Jim, I think you were trying to do a citizens' concern, but we rushed on very quickly, so I will briefly allow that.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I was wondering if any of the selectmen would be willing and able to, when we get to the consent agenda, to pull the right-of-way street cut permit applications off of the consent agenda. That's item 11. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Sure. And actually noting the time and that it's not quite 7:10 yet, we will do the consent agenda now. I also wanted, I forgot to mention two things. We will be skipping item number three, the FY19 O&amp;M rates for the sewer district. Steve Barrett has been out, so we need some more information on that. So we will discuss that at our August meeting, so if you happen to be here for that issue, you probably can go home. And we'll be holding one of the consent agenda items as well, which I will do momentarily as I read through this. So I will read through, if anybody has any they would like to hold, please say hold. Number eight, request disposal of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Number nine, disposition of four Cherry Ridge Road. Number 10, the 53 River Street Master Plan Committee Charge Update. Number 11, the right-of-way street cut permit applications. Joan has held it. Number 12, meeting minutes for June 4th, 16th, and 26th, 2018. Number 13, waiver of fee request for 46 Mass Ave Sewer Connection, which I'm holding. Number 14, site plan amendment for Fenton &amp; Sons Office Edition contractor building Site Plan Number 01/22/98-36125 Westford Lane. Number 15, committee appointment, Amanda Steinberg, full member, South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee. Number 16, committee appointment, Susan Flint and William Froberg, full members, Conservation Commission. Number 17, committee appointment, Paul Malchodi, Water District Land Management Advisory Committee. Number 18, multiple individual one-day alcoholic beverage licenses for July 19th, 26th, 28th, August 25th, 26th, and September 22nd, 2018 at NARA. And number 19-
Can I, can I hold just to make a comment about that?
Yep. And number 19, request for bike station planning division, 530 Massachusetts Avenue. Okay, so let's go in reverse order. Janet, you held number 18.
Yeah, I just, I don't have a concern. I just know that on the application form, it says that if you're going to have 50 or more attendees, you're supposed to have a TIP-certified server and all that, and we don't always have, require that. And so I think that if we're going to sometimes allow people, especially if the police chief is saying that, recommending that we approve the one-day licenses, I think we maybe ought to have some sort of guidance about when we don't enforce that TIP-certified server requirement.
You're meaning sometimes we don't see the scan?
Yeah, I mean, it's just that if they don't submit, there was one submission, I think by Deborah Simes. She had TIP-certified server, her own daughter, which is really convenient, but there were a couple of other parties that were fairly large, including a wedding, and there was no certificate submitted. And I know Lisa deals with this a lot more than we do, so I don't know if we have to approve condition on their providing a TIP-certified certification or what. Because it, obviously, the decision was made, I guess, a while back, that, you know, 50 was the number where we wanted to have, have somebody who was familiar with the signs of overdrinking, so.
Right.
But, you know, it's, we don't have to hold up these. I'm just concerned that, you know, we not get in the habit of ignoring that, because then people, everybody else will ignore it, so.
Lisa, do you wait until you get that before you approve them if they're over 50? Do you wait till you have proof of a TIP certification? Okay, 'cause some, sometimes a copy isn't in our packet, so if it's not, do we assume, I usually assume you have it and it's just not in our packet, but do you wait to get that to make sure they have a copy before we? Yeah, okay, so I think we do. We can, but maybe we make the motion that it's just conditional on that, so that there's a backup that they do have it. Do you want to make a motion on that one separately?
Yeah, I, I'll just move that we approve the one-day alcoholic beverage licenses and item 18 with the condition that they all have, the ones that are supposed to have the TIP-certified certification, provide that to Lisa.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Number 13 I held, we're going to pull that. There are just some questions about whether or not they're still requesting the full waiver of the sewer connection and what-
Building.
Building. We don't have any backup on that, so we're going to hold that and get clarification for the next meeting. Okay. Okay, and then number 11, right-of-way street cut permit applications. Joan, I assume you held per Jim's request. So Jim, do you have any comments?
There is one of the, of the proposed curb cuts that has to do with adding new gas service. And I, as part of Green Acton and our research into understanding the, the problems with methane, natural gas, I don't like to let these connections go unnoticed. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that on Bruce Wood Road, where, Bruce Wood is mostly already gas, but this is the house at the beginning of Bruce Wood, as far as I can tell from the records, currently oil. And this would be an opportunity, if we had caught this earlier, to get an upgrade to, to modern electric systems such as air-source heat pumps, that would provide heating and cooling at a, at a, at what will soon be a lower operating cost. And certainly will help reduce the, help us get to a point where we're not using fossil fuels sooner. As soon as someone is hooked into natural gas, it's like getting a, you know, it's a main line, right into your, right into your life. It's hard to disconnect once it's there flowing in. I think of, I think of getting, moving away from fossil fuels, especially natural gas in Acton, as being a, you can think of it as like a 40-year project now, starting yesterday. Because once houses do have natural gas, it's usually until, it's usually not until their systems are falling apart that it's worthwhile financially for them to consider a major change. So we have to be patient with this. It's going to take a while. I'll probably be back here a few more times. But I'm looking forward to the time when we have more federal and state regulatory support for saying no to these curb cuts that cook new people into natural gas. But I did want us to at least acknowledge that this is happening again, and make sure I understood where, where my selectmen stood on this question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments from board members? Janet?
No, did you, I was going to move to approve the consent agenda.
Sure, yeah, I'll just say thank you, Jim, for your comments. As always, we've talked about this in the past, and you know we're working on a number of ways, and I think for now, we're trying to approve these as we get them, and then think about other ways to discourage natural gas connections and encourage other forms of energy in the meantime. But it's important to keep talking about it, so thank you for continuing to bring it up. John?
Jim, thank you for saying it's a 40-year undertaking, and we expect to hear from you over that.
Okay, Janet, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve consent agenda items eight through 12, and 14 through 17 and 19.
Bit of a second?
Seven.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, okay. Any abstentions? Okay, that passes 3-1. Okay, back to our regularly scheduled agenda. Our public hearing notices hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 12 of the General Laws and under Section 140 of the Massachusetts General, Massachusetts General Laws that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room, 204, in the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on July 16th, 2018, at 7:10 PM, on the application of Concord Brewery Inc. for a change of hours in common victular located at 5 Strawberry Hill Road, Acton, Mass. The application is unfiled in the selectmen's office and may be viewed during normal working hours. My understanding is there's nobody from Rapschallian here tonight, but I just want to clarify if anybody is. Okay, seeing none. Their request is to, currently, they have a common victular and all-call license for Tuesday through Sunday, and they've asked to extend that to Monday. They have said that they only plan to use this for special events, but just note that allowing this would allow them to have it anytime between Monday and Sunday. So I think it's, their hours are 11:30 AM to 11:30 PM. I did ask John to talk to town council just to clarify what would happen or what the process is, if board members had any concerns and did deny this. So for a common, for the alcohol license, liquor license, they, Rapschallian could, if they wanted to, if we denied it, would appeal this to the ABCC, who would then make a ruling on it. And for a common victular's license, they would appeal it, not to the ABCC, but I think just through general court perhaps. That wasn't entirely clear. But there is an appeal process for them if people had concerns. So first, are there any questions or comments from board members? John?
Just to, to give Rapschallian a seven-day-a-week-
Correct.
...license. And I note Chief Burrows has received the application, and he has no concerns about extending it to a seventh day.
Correct. Yep. Janet?
I had a question. Was this, was the genesis of this that they were doing some things on Monday that weren't covered by their existing license?
Yes.
And so after the fact, they're kind of, not, not to validate what they've already done, but try to preempt future problems?
Yes.
I don't know. I vaguely recall hearing about that, so.
Yes, they were serving alcohol on Mondays, which is not currently allowed on their license, and they also had a food truck at the premise on Mondays. The food truck had also not been permitted or reviewed by the Board of Health, and they are not, and Rapschallian is not permitted to be open on Mondays. So they were doing this without, they said that they didn't realize, although I think it's been a few years, that their license has been Tuesday through Sunday, so they have made this request. As I noted, they say they would like to only use it for special events. Personally, I, I think I'm okay extending this, but I will say that I have no faith that they will only use this for special events, just because I don't think they've abided by any conditions we put on them in the past, and I have concerns related to that. I don't think extending this for, you know, until Mondays is a huge deal, and we can talk about their license in general in the future. They haven't had any over-service issues, so that's not where my concern lies. It's really a matter of abiding by the various rules and regulations of the licenses and other issues in, in town, under which they are supposed to operate. So that's where my concern is.
Yeah, I, you know, I am not happy with what's been happening in the past, and, you know, I'd like them to be sort of straight up about, about complying with the license, the terms of the licenses, and instead of coming to us after something has happened that was outside of the scope of the license and asking for, for our leniency. But I'm not, you know, I give them a day, and they, they're already under a fair amount of scrutiny. And as it is, they've got those temporary parking, parking ban signs all along the street, which are, are, you know, quickly fading and becoming more or less semi-permanent. But those seem to be effective in controlling some of the traffic problems that were cropping up when, when they had a lot of parking on the street, so. But I, we'll just see what happens, and, you know, if we start getting complaints from neighbors or something, then we'll revisit the issue, so.
If, if I understand this, in their, in their, in their corporate resolution, what they voted for was to extend it, it's a full seven-day-a-week, 11:30 AM to 11:30 PM, and that's for the Rapschallian table and tap hour. So it's, I guess it's really full restaurant service.
Yes, again, in their note to us, they have said that they only intend to have special events on Monday. The problem is, you can't get a one-day liquor license if you want to hold a special event if you hold an all-alcohol general license. So they couldn't get one-offs to hold things on, you know, whatever periodic Mondays, so they've asked to extend it. Now, it, it would allow them, if they wanted, to be open from 11:30 AM to 11:30 PM on Monday, so we just have to be comfortable with that. And, you know, again, as Janet noted, there is a lot of scrutiny. If they're operating outside those hours, you know, I think we could, we will hear about it and can deal with it, but.
I mean, he's, they've developed a very good restaurant pub there, and that has a lot of customers. People seem very happy there, and I think we should be supportive of it and give him the, the seven-day license. And I realize there have been issues. I've got that.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the audience? All right, seeing none.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, up next is a request for support of the Massachusetts Property Assess Clean Energy Program, or PACE. And this was a request that came to us from the Green Advisory Board, and I believe, is there somebody here from the Green Advisory Board tonight? Yes. Do you mind coming up? You can sit at the table here if you would like. And if you don't, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and the request and program, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm Mary Smith. I'm in the Green Advisory Board. I have a lot of background in energy. So were you going to start with this?
Sure.
I thought it was your baby.
I'm aware of it.
Oh, okay, well, I, I have some details.
Okay, so the, the AGAB has recommended that we consider the program and that the board adopts the program called PACE, which is the Property Assess Clean Energy Program. And I think, to summarize it, it would allow the town to serve as a lender for commercial projects who want to do clean energy improvements to their property.
Okay. The town wouldn't be the lender, but it would be put on the tax bill. It would be a betterment assessment. It would be much like a betterment assessment. But the lender would be a lender that the Mass Development Corporation works with. It works with businesses. It's made for commercial businesses, for nonprofits, and, and unfortunately, residential isn't in the program yet. But the way it works is that the customer, the customer would be encouraged to install as much energy efficiency project as they could. The energy efficiency programs work well for customers, but right now, they don't, you can't, they, they have a five-year payback. If you really want a good new building, or even if you have major renovations to make, you want to make them with a, you want to do stuff with the building envelope, the windows, and many of the energy efficiency programs that exist now just don't have the time length. So what they will do is you take out a loan. The loan would have to be paid for with the energy savings from the project. And the loans can be 20 years, and they would, and the way it works is PACE is the manager of this, and PACE is administered through the Mass Development Corporation. They will work with lenders to provide this type of loan to the customer. And the, and the mortgage that the customer has would be what would provide it, and they'd work with the lender. The municipality would collect the money for the loan every month or every quarter, and the municipality would have the first lien on that loan. So it would be the municipality, then PACE, and then the mortgage company. And it's, the design of it is to encourage energy efficiency in buildings, commercial buildings, nonprofit buildings, and hopefully to get down to net-zero housing or buildings. Questions?
Are there questions or comments from the board? Janet?
Mary, I just wanted to acknowledge your long service on the GAB. I remember when I was leave onto the GAB, you were on there. And you've done a lot of really good work on GAB also. I don't know if you're still doing stuff at Harvard, but anyhow, a very, one of numerous knowledgeable members of that committee and who have done a lot of wonderful progressive things with regard to energy efficiency for the town, so just wanted to thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. One of the things about this particular program is that it's, it's going to be developed in, the state has already said that they would like to do this. The state has signed on to this, but the municipalities then have to sign on to it and say that they're willing to collect this money through, through a betterment assessment. And Mass Development is in, already in Connecticut, it's already in Rhode Island. It's operating, it's, there's energy legislation in 33 states, I believe, and 20 states are participating actively in it. And the next move for PACE is, hopefully, is to get residential loans that people can get. Of course, we might not like collecting for all of those, but anyway, that's, that's sort of where they're going.
Any other board members, questions?
You look very puffed.
Was there an issue from the emails that we saw about tempering the gas extension lines?
So Mary wouldn't have seen those issues. So one of the questions or concerns that has come up, and that the town manager I both noticed when we were looking at this, is that one of, there are a few sort of eligible projects or things that you can use PACE for, as Mary noted, and one of those is a natural gas line extension. Town manager has talked to council, and we looked into this. It's sort of, we will have to decide to opt in or not to the program. It's a state-run program, so we're not able to say we will, you know, provide the support and the betterments for, you know, only some of these measures. So we have to decide if people have concerns with the gas line, potential that this program could be used by businesses to extend natural gas lines to connect to their businesses if that's outweighed by the other energy efficiency means that, that the program can also be used for or not. Northampton has, you saw language, I think, in one of the emails, that Northampton has sort of put in their approval of this, or opting into this program, discouraging people from, or businesses from using this program to connect or extend natural gas lines. We could do something similar. It's not binding, so if we're part of the program, they can still use that. But that's sort of a bit of the issue. Mary, I don't know if you have a thing to add.
This actually just came up in the GAB meeting, and there was discussion about it, but the person that was speaking to us from the Mass Development Corporation said the same thing that you did, that this was a program that had been legislated in that they just couldn't get rid of that, but they were going, they were going to try to discourage people from using gas.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
It would be a weird.
Questions from board members? And I would just note, oh, there was something else I was going to say. I don't remember. I must stick with what I've noted already, but about the concerns related, related to natural gas, and we did talk to council about it. I do think overall, it's a very good program, and I think if we do this, we could come up with a motion either tonight or for another meeting, that if the board, if that's the board's desire, that would include language saying that we're opting into the program, but that we discourage the use of this for natural gas line extensions. And Mary, is there any part of kind of the, that the town will play in, you know, providing education or publicity for this program, or is that really done by Mass Development?
Well, that's one thing that did come up at the meeting, and we encouraged Mass, PACE, Mass Development to get out there and publicize it.
Yeah.
That this is one of the things we think is missing in terms of energy management in, is people just don't know enough about it. And one, one organization, not organization, group I forgot to mention, was this would be eligible for multifamily housing also. So it's a pretty broad program. But we are encouraging PACE to get out there and provide us with things that we can give to people.
And I would just say that then we could, you know, potentially use that as an opportunity to promote the other, you know, uses of this and not focus on the natural gas extension, I think, as a way that we could, you know, get at that means. The other thing I was going to note is that the town manager did talk to, you know, looked at our processes, talked to town finance, and made sure they were comfortable administering this program. It's very similar, and John, let me know if I'm speaking out of turn, but to what we do with the sewer betterment, so it's not something we would be uncomfortable administering, and that we would be okay doing that, so. Questions or comments from audience members?
I don't think I have much to say, because I think you've said exactly what I would hope the direction that the board would take, which is to seek, to seek advice on the strongest possible actions and language you can take to discourage the natural gas extensions. And, and just to re, and just reinforce the idea that, except for that awful part, this is really is a wonderful program, and I'm glad that Acton is, is engaged in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Deborah Sines, Concord Road. So I'm echoing what Jim's saying. I would like to see this go forward. I'm disappointed we can't get rid of that. I'm disappointed we can't get rid of the natural gas part, but I really strongly encourage the board to include some language, similar to Northampton's or not, and I'm just going to read that for the audience and for the record. North, you know, they do the whole, "Where is this and that," and five other things. Then it says, pardon me, "Whereas the city council strongly prefers that renewable energy systems and energy efficiency projects are used before natural gas is considered and recognizes that PACE Massachusetts moves us toward a reduction of greenhouse gas emissions." So something along those lines would be great. Pardon me one second. And the other thing I want to say is I sent the selectmen a bunch of information, or an article basically, about the forward-looking landscape around natural gas costs and renewable costs generally as we look over the next couple of decades. And I would encourage you, if you do include language like that, however you execute this with, you know, the business and nonprofit community, that you make that kind of information part of what you use to educate them, so that they're not just, you know, kind of going with the same old information. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. First of all, I'd like, I love the idea of our finance department being used as a public bank. So this is very exciting to me, and they're talking about doing it at the state level. But yes, on that, and yes, what these guys said. I have a technical question for Mary, and I thank you. I also led the way to get you hired on the GAB. We co-founded that together. Anyways, how do they get to net zero by using fossil fuel? This always baffles me.
They don't.
They don't? Okay. So technically speaking, if it was to get to net zero, they wouldn't give the loan for a natural gas hookup, right?
Right.
Yeah. And so how does the process work? Like, who do they apply to? Do they apply to the state?
Okay, so again, just, you know the rules. You have to address questions of board. I'll ask Mary to respond. It's a formal thing, but that's how we work. So, Mary, if you have information or specifics on how the program works, that would be appreciated.
The way it works is that they apply to PACE, and PACE then go, which is part of the Mass Development Corporation right now, and they go to their lender, and they do the work to make sure that the savings are adequate to finance the project. Because the savings pay for the project, and it has to, it has to last for as long as they have to pay for the project. 20 years is the maximum. And then after they get approved for the loan, they've also gone to their mortgage company. And their mortgage company has to be willing to give a lien to the lender. And then the lender gives a lien to the community.
Okay, thank you. So, is the town involved in the process at all, so that we might be able to actually add a step, if it's natural gas, to at least add some disruption into the process?
My understanding is no, but Mary, you can clarify.
I don't think the town is involved in the approval process.
And then I wanted to question, I guess, for the town manager. When you ask council, if you ask, "Can we do something?", often it's, "No, we don't advise," et cetera. But when we ask, "How can we do it?", so I wonder whether we asked, "How can we get the town involved in the approval process and deny the gas?" Or, anyway.
He asked on my behalf, and it was a question that I asked. And again, it's a state program. That's not, you opt into part of it or out of it. I asked him to look into that, to clarify if that was true or not, and that is the case.
Thank you. Two more questions. One, this might be for Mary, too. The percentage of the money in PACE that has been going to the, to gas hookups and equipment and other types of gas fueled?
Has any money gone out yet, Mary?
No money's gone out in Massachusetts.
Thank you. And the last question is, how are you going to discourage? So, if we're going to discourage, but we're not included in the approval process, where are we doing the discouragement?
As I noted, in the motion that we would potentially approve and/or in the education materials, if we are part of educating and publicizing using the program, I think that we can put the emphasis on the other forms or other projects that you can use this for as opposed to natural gas and include information on the downsides of natural gas.
Thank you. And so then the follow-up question. So we've previously talked about educating people, developers, people putting in new homes, about these other alternatives, and I'm wondering, how's that going?
So Jim and Deborah are working on materials related to that.
Okay, thank you.
And so we are working on it. Okay, any other questions? Peter, I know you came in a little late. We're talking about the PACE program right now, but as liaison for GAB, I know you know a bit more about it. So, questions or comments from other board members? So I guess my question would be, do people want to wait, and we can come up with a motion? Would it sort of be the wish of the board that we come up with a motion that includes language similar, we're not as formal as them, we're not going to do a "whereas," but just including our motion, some sort of language similar to Northampton's discouraging natural gas while opting into this program? Or do people want to approve it tonight, or come up with some language on the fly? I mean, I don't know how you feel about that, but.
I'm open to doing it either way. I think that in addition to discouraging the natural, use of the grants for natural gas connection, I'd like to encourage, you know, specify some other things so that we're not leaving the businesses sort of in the lurch. I mean, we obviously have at least one project mass app that where the architect is very familiar with alternatives to gas hookups. And so as, as knowledge spreads like that, perhaps more people will be aware of it, but it would be good to provide information about the positive side that you could use it. But I, you know, we can develop the language, the formal language afterwards, or you can, you know, I mean, I'm prepared to do a simple motion, you know, subject to development of language. What do we?
I mean, it's really.
Would you rather have a formal motion? I mean, with all the language?
If the goal is to have a motion that contemplates opting out of natural gas if it becomes available to us?
Yeah.
I have something that you could consider.
Oh, you do? Okay, great.
From council, yes.
Yeah, do you mind reading that?
Sure. So, "The board votes to opt into the PACE program, but if at any point in the future there is an option pursuant to forthcoming regulations or other guidance to exclude participation in the national gas extensions portion of the program, that the selectmen intend to so opt out of that portion of the program."
So moved. Is there a second for that motion?
I'd like to soften the language. The selectmen will, will give careful consideration to opting out of. I, you know, I don't know, because we can't, I'm not, you know, we can't necessarily bind. It's like, maybe something will change.
It will tend to.
Yeah, all right. That's fine. We'll just, I'll just say, I'll second for the sake of getting this over.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion. Thank you, John, for having that. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any, oh, Jim, did you have a question?
The one difference between the Northampton language and the proposed language is the, getting on the record, the selectman's request or opinion to discourage people from using the natural gas, I think also, but I think having this clause in about, you know, noting that if there is an ability to opt out, the town would like to opt out. But I think those are both separate and interesting and important parts potentially of the language. So, just going to recommend that you see if you, see if there's a way to add the discouragement language in even for current applications. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So that motion passing, I'll say, you know, honestly, our motion's not going to be what's sent to the, to the state, so I think we can include, you know, we've discussed it. It seems like that's people's general feeling. We can include a note to that effect when we send our kind of opt-in to the state. I don't think it needs to be a part of our official motion at this point. I think the formal part is honestly a little more impactful in that terms, and make, as you noted, makes our intentions, future intentions clear. And this meeting is published, or is televised, and we will have minutes that include our kind of comments along this, so I think it kind of covers that unless anybody has anything they would like to add. Okay, great. All right, thank you. So as noted earlier, we're going to skip over item number three, and we will handle that at our August meeting. So up next is item number four, the Board of Health fees. So we have a memo from Cheryl Ball, the health director.
Thank you.
In our packet. The Board of Health is currently meeting, and they're downstairs, so Cheryl's unable to attend unless we need her. John, did you have anything to add on this one? I think they had, I'm their liaison, I attended the meeting where they talked about these fees, and they had worked with the finance department to update their fees based on actual hours work and hours worked and effort put into each of these, approving each of these activities or applications. And so there's some that actually go down, well, the majority of them go up, and those are indicated in here. So, John, I don't know if you had anything.
So, my only comment is that, my understanding is that the fees that are proposed tonight by the Board of Health are increased over the 2016 fees based on the resources required to deliver the service.
Were there any questions from board members?
Move to approve?
Well, so hold on. I just want to make sure any questions or comments from the audience.
Quick question.
Sure.
So, I guess there's been a move recently to increase the fees to actually, you know, be with all our costs. And so one of the things that forward-looking towns seem to be doing is to have in the budget things like, you know, historic preservation, types of consulting, things that we need but never seem to have enough money for. And so I'm hoping that we'll do another round of fee increases to include some of these forward-looking, future plan things that we haven't yet included. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll note it includes a town head overhead multiplier and other things as well. It's not just the Board of Health time. So there are things like that included in there. I don't think specifically that kind of. Okay, any other questions or comments from the audience? Joan, you had a motion?
Second.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Okay, up next is number five, the preliminary plans for the site planned parking garage for Insulet Corp. So Roland, are you handling that, or is there somebody from Insulet here?
Yeah, I'm handling that, Roland. Yeah, Insulet approached planning about this parking garage that you mentioned. They explained that they have a much faster growing workforce than they expected and much faster growing business, that they will be filling their capacity sooner than they had anticipated, and that in order to accommodate their employees, they need more parking. You might recall the site plans that was granted, together with a special permit to waive certain parking requirements, a little more than a year ago. So now they're looking to amend that site plan special permit to actually add parking. The governing zoning instrument is really the special permit, and I explained that in my memo, so it would be an amendment to the special permit if approved. And the question that Insulet has is what process would I recommend? And I said, "Well, I'm going to have to probably consult with the Board of Selectmen on that." So, obviously, three ways of doing this. One is to simply approve it as a, as a consent item on the agenda. I don't recommend that. The second is, now, the reason why I don't recommend it is it's a sizable building. It'll be visible, and there, the board may want to have some input in, to at least understanding where it is, what it looks like, and all of that. The second option is, is to have it at a public meeting of the board after departmental comments have been received, to make sure there aren't any engineering, structural, whatever, concerns. And then, of course, the third option, which is the longest process for everybody, is a full, full board public hearing with notices and all of that. So, I think, because everybody knows Insulet has come here, they've occupied that site, they intend to build that site to the fullest they can, and they have a growing business. All of that is known. I'm not so sure that this proposed parking garage is such a surprising idea, and so my recommendation falls in the middle, but it's clearly up to the board, and that's what I'm here to ask. The parking garages, if you recall, and you have some plans here, the parking garage is on an, would be on top of a new parking lot, part of a new parking lot that was approved as part of the site plan yet, last year, and it would therefore be near Nagar Park Drive and quite visible from the, from the road there. Yep.
Thank you, Roland. Questions from board members? Janet?
Yeah, my one question, or one concern, is making sure that some of those people whose property is overlooked by what was the parking lot and who were concerned about headlights and the like shining into, into their property, that they get notice so that they can show up at the public discussion and weigh in on the garage, which I gather is going to be about 33 feet high, right, in sort of roughly the same spot. So, it's even, I don't know if it's going to, well, I assume it's going to have little walls so that you can't just drive off the edge, but, but, you know, I don't know if it's going to be, those are going to be high enough to catch the headlights so that you don't have headlights coming out, you know, on the third level or the second level, and, you know, somehow hitting, I don't know where the ramps are going to be going on and all that sort of thing. So, you know, those were the issues, I think, that were raised with regard to the parking. The lot was concerned about, of the people down below about the possibility of headlights. And so I think that the Insulet was going to put in screening or something like that. But if they're going to have a garage, it's a little different, yeah, issue, and it depends on what, what comes out from the garage. If nothing, then, you know, it's just, maybe it's not an issue. But that would be my only concern, is that if we just have a public meeting, these folks aren't necessarily going to get, they don't get official notice, right?
No, they wouldn't get official notice unless there was a full-fledged public hearing. I mean, we could certainly notify them. We still have the list of the parties in interest from last year, but.
But otherwise, I do like the idea of getting, having the proposed garage presented to the town staff for comments and addressing any issues that might exist before it gets to our board.
Okay.
Other questions, Joan?
Yeah, as I look at the plans, it looks as though the entrance to the garage is facing in the direction of that neighborhood.
Yeah, that, it's interesting to read these garage plans, you know. So, the entrance is, as I read it, the entrance is, but that's at ground level. So the entrance is facing that side, but it's at ground level. So presumably, once the screening has grown up enough and all of that, and it's built and installed, that should cover that. What I would be more concerned about is the headlights moving around on the second and third deck.
Right.
You know?
Because this doesn't show the outside of the building at all. It just shows the levels.
Right, right. It doesn't show any of the, what it's going to look like. I asked him, and I said, "Well, it'll look like a parking garage."
Peter?
So I just have a legal question. It doesn't seem to be required that we hold a formal hearing because of the, this is not an increase in the floor area or whatever. We have the option of requiring a formal hearing, even if it's not required under the zoning bylaw?
Well, it's governed by the permit, and in the permit, there's no, there's nothing clear in the statute or in the zoning bylaw when, about it. When, what's clear in the zoning bylaw is, is when you add 1,200 square feet of impervious cover or building square footage, you're required to do a site plan. And I've always held that that requires a new site plan, not just an amendment of an old one. But then you get into this area where you have 600 square feet added, or 200 square feet added. That doesn't trigger the zoning bylaws threshold for a new site plan, and then that's usually when the. the Board can make a decision. Okay, so how do we amend this? Do we, is it worth a full public hearing or, or not? Or what, what process are we going to use? And you might recall, we have brought to you in, you have one here tonight, a small edition that is inconsequential. Nobody can see it. It's in the back and it's not really significant in any way, with a recommendation to approve that by consent as an amendment to a previously approved site plan. In this case, I wanted to make sure I asked the question. Thank you.
Okay. John, any questions?
So Roland, your recommendation was to go with, your suggestion two, and that would be the most appropriate under the circumstances?
Yeah, I mean, I'm taking into consideration, you know, that it does, with that, it would get a public airing, although it wouldn't be a full-fledged public hearing. It would be somewhat accommodating to Insulet's desire to actually get this thing going in the fall. Public hearings can kind of, they have their own timeframe and they could go on. There's notice requirements and all that. So yes, that's what I'm recommending in the middle ground, but we will certainly, if that's the Board's desire, and even if not voted, we will notify the abutters and let them know that there is this going on. Would you like to come?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Janet. I think we should notify the abutters, whether we do that or ask Insulet to do it. But I do think that's important, as Joan and Janet noted. That was the big concern when we were first approving this of the neighbors on that side was the effect of the lights. And like Janet, I thought, oh, maybe the parking garage will be better because there actually be some, those little walls. I don't know, but it would be good to get town staff to weigh in on that kind of stuff and to have the DRB review it as well, which was part of your number two recommendation. So I think that would be important, but I don't think we need to, the full hearing seems a bit much in terms of some of the other waiting periods and things that don't seem as, as necessary. So I'd be supportive of option two as long as we notify the abutters of the discussion.
When you say abutters, you just mean the abutters that are downhill?
Yeah, I mean, I guess they...
Sort of in the woods, not, not the Avalon abutters.
Not Avalon.
Because they're on the other side of the building. They won't really...
Well, I was gonna ask, they won't see it, right?
No.
Because it's not higher than the...
I don't think so. No, it's, it's not higher.
Yeah, okay. Because it's two stor, it's three stories, but one of the stories is sort of essentially below ground.
Right, right.
Or, you know, below whatever level. Okay, and then, something that may have another question, but I don't remember that. So, okay, I, I am fine with that recommendation. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Let us get a share the mic. Thank you.
Derek Fredericks, West Acton. Thank you for recommending the DRB. Appreciate that. I was, did know that multi-level garages, parking garages were allowed under zoning. So I guess it's true, yes. They're allowed, multi-level garages are allowed in Acton. This, is this our first one? I think this is our first one. I, I've never seen one. And so they are by right. Is that, is that what, you know, we, we have to approve this? Is that if they meet all the requirements and...
I mean, that's what we'll discuss at the, at the hearing or the public meeting, but yes.
How, how does this impact the taxes? Because I know that there's, there's, I seem to remember a tax break. And wondering if by erecting the garage, is that, would that also be covered by the tax break? I guess that would happen at the hearing. We get those answers.
I think our, our tax break is a percentage. So it's if, and it's based on the increased value to the property. So if they're increasing the value to the property, then the tax break in essence is increasing, but it also, their future taxes they pay to us are also increasing. So Peter, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, I would just point out that this building was vacant for probably ten years and no taxes were basically being collected. So whatever taxes we get, even though it's reduced.
Or a significant increase.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, or significant increase.
It'd be a significant increase over, it's not that no taxes were paid.
Oh, okay.
But, but the value of the property by it being occupied was increased so substantially, we're getting a lot more taxes than we were before.
Thank you. In Stowe, I was looking at some of the regional reports, and they actually report the amount of new taxes created by the improvements in buildings. They report that every year. I thought that was really interesting. So we got that. And MIPC is recommending that towns add a tax for impervious, for impervious services. So I hope that we, we look into that soon. And I just, I think this is an opportunity to tell you that the accelerated growth is also increasing the water that's being used by the site, and that it's my understanding that Insulet is going for a well to be tapped and approved by the state on that location. And so I feel like we should be, you know, figuring out how that impacts our water. The, the abutters conversation, I was listening and I appreciate the effort to minimize the headlights. And I was wondering, I never heard of like notifying the people that might get light in their eyes. Usually it's like a hundred feet, three hundred feet, whatever it is. And I, I hope we use a consistent program for that. The visible, I, I assume you meant from the, from the immediate road there. I was interested whether it was visible from two-way because I'm specifically interested in what's visible from double-lined roads because of the town character aspects. So I guess we could talk about that at the hearing, but I did want to take the opportunity to express my concern. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I don't think we need to take a vote on this, but is it the sense of the Board that everybody sounds like, unless I hear otherwise, is okay with recommendation number two, and we'll provide notice to the abutters on that side impacted by the garage? Okay, so that's all good to you Roland? All right, great. Thank you very much.
Just a, so would that be for August 3rd?
Um, August 3rd? Do you think they, well, we'll have to talk to Insulet, I guess, to make sure they can, and if there's enough time for staff to, August 6th, sorry. I keep saying August 3rd. You're right.
I will report this back to Insulet and then ask when they are ready to submit stuff for departmental review.
Right.
And then we can, I think it's better time to schedule it at that point. So they look like they were pretty close to ready, but I will give them some heads up about the lighting and maybe they can do some design mitigation for that right away for the headlights, you know, before they even come to us.
Yeah. And just make sure they know we only have the one meeting on August 6th in August. So if they can't do that and get it ready by then, then it would be September 10?
All right. I mean, August 6th is, is, you know, I mean, it really depends on them at this point, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
August 6th is gonna be jammed if this does happen, but we will. But then you get the rest of the month off. Okay, and now we are at number six, pretty close to when I anticipated. Local regulation of recreational marijuana, proposed general bylaw ban and zoning bylaw regulations. Janet, I will turn this over to you.
Just quickly, an overview of the materials that are in the packet, going backwards, starting at the back with the proposed ban, I think somewhere. Anyhow, we have, we have a proposed, proposed language for town meeting and ballot vote on a complete ban of all recreational marijuana establishments. And it's my recollection that council said that the deadline for our getting the ballot question to the state for approval and all the rest of it is thirty-five days before November 6th, which puts us somewhere in September, but you can verify that. But the idea was that once we decide when we're going to have our special town meeting in November, the same identical, identical language go on, the ballot and also on the special town meeting warrant article. And if the voters approved at both, in both of those places, we'd have a ban in effect. What we have at the forefront is about proposed zoning regulations, which are a backup plan in the event that the ban fails, either because voters at town meeting didn't approve or voters at the ballot didn't approve. Because effective January of 2019, our moratorium is going to come to an end. And although the Attorney General has indicated that communities can try to extend the moratorium, it's sort of clear that you have to have really good reason to get an extension. And I think that in the meantime, we could have some regulations in place just to sort of, as a stopgap measure. So the planning department has sat down and first of all, put together a map of what our zoning currently allows and with an eye to where the school campuses are because you have, you cannot have recreational marijuana establishments within five hundred feet of a school. You can, and so that was important to note on the plan. And then where the different kinds of recreational marijuana establishments could operate. And I had talked tentatively about just saying, for example, no, no retail or maybe no recreational marijuana at all in, in West Acton and also in Kelly's Corner because of the proximity of the schools. There may be other locations that the Board or people in the audience want to add, but just keep in mind that under zoning, we are not allowed to impose such onerous restrictions that effectively we're banning recreational marijuana. We have to allow, if we don't have a ban in place, we have to allow some recreational marijuana establishments. We can, though, limit time, place, and manner of operation. The planning director has recommended that we focus on location, regulation of location. So specify where different types of recreational marijuana establishments can operate and, and control, control the businesses that way. And I think that there's also, council had also thrown in a, a draft for proposed, proposed three, three percent surcharge tax on recreational, on retail establishments in the event that at some point, if we had a ban in place, in the event that they became legal, because you're allowed to do that. And Concord, Concord did that. They have a complete ban and they also have this three percent surcharge option, which they could call on if they ever decided to legalize something, recreational marijuana in town. So, but that's what we have. And so I guess, where did Robert go? Maybe, maybe Robert, I have a feeling the ban isn't going to require that much discussion because it's a ban. I think the process is a two-step process, which I explained. I think based on what I understand the dates are for our special town meeting, I would guess that special town meeting is gonna follow the ballot vote on November 6th. So if the ban passes on November 6th, then at special town meeting, we will take up the companion warrant article for the ban. And if that passes, we have a ban. If the ban fails for some reason at, at, well, the ballot, then we would probably take up the proposed zoning regulations. Unless people want to take up the ban at special town meeting and then schedule a ballot vote in 2019. But I'm not sure that that's a recommended process at this point. So, but that's the process. It's two steps for the ban. The thing that probably will require more discussion or people would want to discuss is the backup plan for zoning regulations and where you want businesses to operate and where you don't want them to operate, keeping in mind that we can't just be overly restrictive. There's one more thing that I would add that I think Ali Lee mentioned in an email, and that's we are required to have a minimum if we have it legal in town. We are required to have a minimum of twenty percent of the package store licenses locally, which Lisa knows and I keep forgetting. But it's, you know, a fair number. So, but we can make that the maximum, whatever. I wouldn't recommend a specific number. I would just say that that's the maximum is twenty percent of whatever the, the current number of package store licenses is. So, but Robert, if you want to go over what you have about zoning, then we can sort of have a, a full-blown discussion about...
Sure. Robert Hummel, Assistant Town Planner, Plank Division. So the Plank Department or Division, now it's called, was asked by the Board of Selectmen to explore and provide zoning options in the town to pursue a case, just in case the ban for recreational marijuana failed at either the vote or on the ballot. The purpose of this presentation is to discuss the possible regulation for recreational marijuana. My PowerPoint will not discuss the ban in general. It will just discuss options for zoning. There are different marijuana establishments under Master and Allar. From there, you can see under the subbullets, marijuana retailers, marijuana co-venter, all the way down to independent testing laboratories. For this presentation, only marijuana retailers will be discussed for possible future zoning regulations. Under Master and Allar, marijuana retailers can, can be summarized as a retail store that deliver, sell, or otherwise transfer marijuana and marijuana products to consumers. Currently, without separate regulations on the books, marijuana retailers would be defined as a retail store in the zoning bylaw, which is allowed in all business and village districts. The use under other establishments are, are uses regulated by the state. They can be classified as industrial uses. Under local zoning, industrial uses, such as manufacturing, scientific, would be defined under zoning bylaw, section 3.6. The town may allow marijuana retailers in some district and not in other districts, such as, as, as we discussed earlier. Under Master and Allar, it requires that marijuana establishments are prohibited from within a distance of five hundred feet or less of a pre-existing public or private school providing K to 12 education. This would include all of the AB schools, the Victor School, the Colebrook High School, also known as Case Collaborative. The town may decide to decrease the buffer distance, but it may not increase it. So if the ban fails and if there's no zoning regulations in place, someone could open a recreation, recreational marijuana retail shop in the zoning district that allows retail sale. Some example of districts are West Acton Zoning District, Kelly's Corner Zoning District, and limited business zoning district, just for a few examples. One possible zoning change could be to create a new use category under zoning called marijuana retailer. The town may allow the use in the limited business zoning district, East Acton Village Zoning District, East Acton Village Zoning District Two, or Palomillo Zoning District. One of the pros of, of doing this would be to, it would limit the retail use in West Acton, Kelly's Corner, which would, which would create a larger buffer for the school districts. It also would set up a framework where it could be sold in town. One of the cons of doing this would be it would limit the small-scale retail shops that could pop up. It would also limit the business opportunities for properties that are not located in the LB, the EAV, the EAV Two, or the PM zoning district. The draft zoning includes also a separation requirement for marijuana retailers of a thousand feet from each other. And this would prevent three or four marijuana facilities just lining up on the street. And that's all we have.
Okay, questions from board members? Okay, I had a question. So just to clarify, Robert, if, so this is, we're talking about the zoning, which we would get to if the ban passes at...
Correct.
Either the ballot or the town meeting. So the other establishments, not the retail ones, but the testing laboratory and all of that, those would be, under this proposal, allowed where industrial uses are currently there?
Manufacturing, yeah.
Manufacturing, okay. And where is that in town generally?
I can show you the map.
Yeah, that would be...
So we had a little bit of issue with the, the GIS map because of the, of the projector. So I had to redo some of the maps.
Okay.
So they're not, they're not as great.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But so in here, very quickly, blue is retail. So you can see a little blue here. This is the, it's a purpleish reddish. That is manufacturing only, retail only. And then all the yellow in here, and it's a little bit in South Acton and a little bit in Kelly's Corner, that is retail and manufacturing both of them. So you can do both of them. So if you're doing, we're talking about laboratories.
This is currently, if you're saying we didn't have a zoning?
Yeah, this is currently. If nothing happened, this is what would happen. This is what you could do. The other purple areas is where you could do manufacturing. So you could have a testing facility. The zoning that we're looking at, or the zoning that we talked about, does not talk about manufacturing, just talk about retail, somewhere you can buy it, somewhere you can, you know, get it back in your car, and somewhere you can go and use it.
So if we pass that, that kind of proposed zoning that just talks about retailing, would then that mean that the other uses are still allowed in those pink areas?
Correct. Yep, correct.
Okay. But the, but the retail would be allowed essentially where that blue is along two-way?
So retail in here would be, would be limited business, EAV, EAV Eight, East Acton, East Acton Two, and then Palomillo Zoning District down here.
Okay.
So there'd be nothing in the villages, nothing in Kelly's Corner, South Acton, and even, even even North Acton. Because North Acton is way too close to the, to Nara Park Too. So we want, we want, we thought mine would be the best idea.
Right. No, I, so I appreciate this. I think that's well thought through. And I like having, providing, if we were to have to go forward with the zoning, providing kind of larger buffer zones for the schools and for, I think, Nara is a smart idea to include that. So that makes sense to me. And I thought the, having the backup for the local option tax is also smart in case it fails so that we are actually collecting, you know, taxes on this. And my only comment was on the ballot... And my only comment was on the ballot question. I thought the language looked good in the summary, and I don't think we need to vote. My preference is that we vote tonight, at least, on the language for the ballot question, so we can start moving that process forward to get it on the ballot. I think we could hammer out the summary a little bit later. And if we want to, if people have any questions or concerns, we can make changes to the zoning, although I'm fairly comfortable right now with that. But my only thing was, in the summary by town council, the last sentence of the first paragraph says, you know, it says, "On month day with the placeholder that Acton Town Meeting approved the bylaw below and voted to submit it for approval pursuant to chapter 94G." So I think our process will be that the ballot will come before the special town meeting. So we would have to remove that sentence, because we won't have that before the ballot question. We won't have the town meeting approval before that. But otherwise, and then my only other question is, would the question itself be, "Shall this town adopt the following bylaw?" And then it has that kind of, that next part in there, but the, like, main question? Because I think that makes it a little clearer. I get frustrated with a lot of these, you know, questions on the ballot that are just worded very confusingly, and you're trying to figure out which way you want to vote on it. So I like that it says, "Shall it adopt this bylaw?" And then it kind of lays out what, what the bylaw would do, which is the ban. So as long as that, as long as we remove that kind of sentence in the summary, I think it's a good plan to move forward. And I thank you and Robert and others for working very hard to put this all together in council. Sure.
Robert, where, where does agricultural activity go? And what category does, where does that go? Is it on the map, or did we forget to put it on the map?
It's not on the map.
Because I don't know if we, yeah, we allow.
It bounces back to the state law. State law doesn't, doesn't really regulate. It regulates it from state law. So if you, it's.
I think, well, we have a little more time to talk about zoning regulation. But I think that if we're, you know, the possibility of having agriculture activity, I honestly wouldn't want it to be outside. I, you know, I think you want it inside, you know, cultivation, just for a lot of reasons.
So agriculture is, under state law, is really, with some restrictions allowed in everywhere. But I thought that the state regulations, and I may be wrong, but that the state regulations for marijuana stated that the growing of marijuana is not, shall not be considered agriculture. Is that correct?
I'm going to have to go back and look at the law.
I thought, I thought, okay, all right.
I will, I will go back and look at it. We do have time, though, to sort of fine-tune the zoning proposals.
Right.
Great. Don't worry about it.
Okay, Peter?
Just for my information, what's a PM zoning district? Is that manufacturing?
That's the Palomillo Zone District. Palomillo Zone District, so it's in South, South Acton, way in the south. It's where the Wendy's is located.
Okay, so that leads to my, that leads to my next question. A medical marijuana establishment is already in that district, right?
Yeah, that's one, one consideration, why they add that in there.
All right. And have we determined yet whether they can automatically convert to recreational without any approval?
I would defer to council. I'm not totally sure.
Council, council, that's a big issue. There's a lot of debate among attorneys about this. But our council says that if we enact a ban, the ban applies. That's, and precludes conversion like that. But, you know, it may lead to litigation, and we just love litigation. We'll worry about that when we come to it.
It will probably do litigation somewhere in this state, as far as it's on us or not.
So I have one more question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does this zoning bylaw draft actually limit the number of residential marijuana businesses to 20%?
It does not.
20% of the liquor licenses?
No, it does, it does not. It just tells you to turn, turn the place where you can do it.
And why was, why was that left out?
That, that is.
We, we didn't talk about it, but I think it, I think it should be in there, but, you know.
Yeah, we can discuss that.
It's legitimate for us to do that. We might as well put it in there. But it's not, you know, we do have time to tweak the zoning bylaw proposals.
Yeah, but it does include, I know before, it does include a separation from other marijuana facilities. So you couldn't have a, you know, a marijuana shop, and then, you know, two buildings down, you could have another one. You know, it makes this a separation, so it's not just, so you don't just get one area of, like, maybe East Acton Village, which pop up like five shops in a row. It prevents us, so it separates them a little bit.
So it's a thousand feet?
Thousand feet, which is similar to what we're doing gas stations, too. Gas station and car washes also have a pre-existing thousand feet, or 500 feet, I think.
Yeah, I liked that provision, so thank you for including that. Roland, did you have a clarification or additional?
Yeah, I, just from a zoning perspective and zoning enforcement perspective, I would, you know, I would be more comfortable with the spatial separation requirement as opposed to the percentage of liquor licenses. Because, you know, that's a harder one to keep track of, and, you know, things might change with that.
But every, every year, Lisa will update.
Right, that's right. But we can, we can also.
Give us the total package store licenses, and then we'll just know what 20% is, and we'll just say, okay, we've got a few more openings, or we've, we've, all our liquor, liquor stores have closed, so you, we're not going to allow it.
Zoning is most comfortable with spatial types of regulations. And we will look into it and see what we can come up with.
As Janet noted, the 20% is allowed, so we could figure out, you know, whether we do both or one of the buffer versions percentage.
I have one other quick question. And I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. But so, under the zoning bylaw, this would be a commercial site, so I assume there'd be selectmen's site plan, selectmen's site plan.
For any new, any new buildings, any existing ones who'd be allowed right now, by right.
Okay.
Would they require a use permit, though, from the selectmen?
A use permit, no.
No, okay. But for the state, well, okay, so that's something to think about, too, if we want to require that they have a, go to the use permit. I think to get license over from the state, they have to get some sort of approval from the Board of Selectmen, because that's why the medical folks have come to us to sign off on their application. But that could change if the state regulations change. It would be good to have some guarantee in our bylaw that they have to come before the selectmen for a use permit as well. So I think that's a good addition. Okay, any other questions from board members? Okay, I will open up to the audience. Please just state your name and address.
Dr. John Blute, Leavenbrier Hill Road. I want to put my background in front. I am not a physician who has treatment of pain as a focus of practice or other things like that. But I am reiterating something that I brought before the Board of Selectmen on a previous meeting, that both the American Medical Association, as well as the Massachusetts Medical Society, two well-respected entities, have strongly recommended against the use of medical, of marijuana, recreational marijuana. That's not medical marijuana, but recreational marijuana. So I want to do that as a background. Second thing, with respect to the issues brought before the board tonight, and this may be too direct, is there some way to make some of these regulations that are complex in terms of zoning, et cetera, et cetera, more challenging if the vote doesn't follow through with the ban of marijuana in this town?
So we can't make it so unduly challenging that they would be disallowed by effect of those regulations? So the answer, short answer is essentially no. We still, there still has to be, if, if the ban is not allowed, then you still, if you have zoning in place, it has to allow, in reality, for shops or whatever to exist. You can't sort of.
You can't discriminate.
Zone it out of existence if the ban fails. So no.
Can you try?
No, under state law, no. And we're not going to do that. We're not going to violate that law. It's already been.
Then I guess I would step back and say, I would hope that the language and the principles and concepts behind the, following up on the vote that was taken in previous town meetings to defer the final vote of this would be as clear as possible so that the residents, the citizens of Acton can make a clear, informed decision about what this town wants to do with respect of recreational marijuana. And I would include that as both the sale, cultivation, et cetera. Not only am I concerned about smoking situation, but I'm particularly concerned about the possibility of this being in the community in various formats that are not recognized by children, adolescents, and adults. In other words, it's in food products or other things like that. So I'll leave it at that and hope that the board would make appropriate decisions with respect to that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Shin Jin Jin from Wampanoag Drive. So I have a couple of general questions. So do we know how many liquor licenses we have in Acton in the ballpark?
Lisa, can you ballpark the number off the top of your head of how many package stores?
Package stores, not restaurants.
Right. Okay, there are eight package store licenses.
So we talked about 20% is like a two license?
Right.
Potential, okay.
Yep.
And also, in general, are we talking, my understanding is we're talking about the Plan B, essentially. You know, the Plan A is the ballot question. So hopefully we'll get the ban for the non-medical use of marijuana, non-medical license for marijuana in Acton. If not, so this is essentially what we talked about today with regarding the zoning. So I have some general questions. So how, how this 500 feet from existing public school, the distance was defined, where does this come from? If you look at the map, it's essentially at the school area. So where, what does this number come from? Is this some kind of tradition?
The 500 feet is the state regulation, so, and we can't make the 500 feet larger, but you can make it smaller, was that my understanding? But essentially, by the proposal that Janet and the Planning Department have put together, the buffer zone for any schools is actually larger, because none of the proposed districts in which retail use would be allowed are within greater than 500 feet of any of the schools in town, if that makes sense. But the 500 feet is what was in state regulation.
Okay, so we're not allowed to have a larger distance than 500 feet?
I mean, we are, by the fact of choosing the zoning districts in which we would allow retail use, or retail facilities, and those are more than 500 feet away from any school.
Okay. My next question is, so what's the reference of 3% tax rate? Is Concord use 3% tax rate?
That's the most allowed under the regulations for medical, the state regulations. So we can adopt up to a 3% local option.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dave Lunger, Wampanoag Drive. I have a question on the zoning requirements. Was there any attention made to restricting establishments as far as size, square footage, number of parking spots, things like that?
So all of that would fall under the existing zoning for retail. So they would have to meet the existing requirements within the zoning district in which they wanted to open up. So if, if you want to open up in the East Acton Village, you have to meet the zoning requirements of a retail use in, in East Acton Village. So it would be the same as what's existing for existing stores.
So maybe there could be a shopping, like a size of Donaldland's, or that kind of thing? I mean, a large, a very large store?
If that's allowed, up to what's allowed under the current regulations in those districts. Yes.
That would be a concern. So I don't know if this bylaw can be changed to put a restriction specifically to marijuana stores.
We could look into it. I mean, I think it gets trickier, you know, regulating specific uses, having different requirements within different, within the existing zoning districts. But they can, we're, I don't think we're going to decide the final language on the zoning tonight, so we can certainly look into that. Peter?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this, just like any other zoning bylaw, I mean, this is an initial draft. It doesn't look like we're going to have a town meeting till December. So we'll be, but the Planning Board has to hold a hearing, a public hearing on this, so it has to go through the whole process. So there'll be a lot of opportunity for, for input from residents.
Thank you.
Bill Beebe, I live in Bellows Farm, 11 Long Meadow Way. I have a question for you. Would you like to hear from me, my understanding, imperfect though it is, of the current drug problem in Acton as understood by the police department? And my source of knowledge is the Acton Police Academy, which I think everybody who has the time should, should take it in. But they had a, one week they had a section for an hour and a half long about drug problems in Acton. Would you like me to summarize that?
I could ask if any of the other members do. I mean, we hear from the chief, and especially at our budget meetings and other things where he updates us every year on the ongoing issues. I think we're all well aware of the statewide issues as well as those in Acton. But if any members want to particularly hear more information.
I would not talk for very long.
I think it might be, I, I do think we're quite aware of the issue. You know, as you can see, we are putting forth a ballot and, and bylaw proposal to ban this, so I don't think you need to overly convince us of it. So I'd ask maybe if you want to email us with any additional information. But we are well aware of the concern.
Could I just describe one slide they have?
Sure.
Okay. The slide showed what looked to be medical marijuana. It was a package, it said, it was a clear package. You could see what was inside. And at the top, it says, "Medical marijuana to be used only under the direction of a doctor, by, controlled by prescription, dah 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 dah." The thing is, because it was clear, you could see inside, what inside was the kind of candy marijuana that appeals to kids. It has the, you know, it had the multiple colors and the little figures and that kind of thing. And I said, man, just, you mentioned Mizu Dachi, you mentioned at one point the danger of pot trick-or-treat. Anyway, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Sir, was that, was that candy sample, was that in Massachusetts? Was it in Acton? Or, because I know that the regulations in Massachusetts have very strict requirements about packaging, because in other states, they do have a problem with packaging that looks just like, you know, your Halloween candy on the outside. And, you know, even unsuspecting adults, you know, who dig into those bags of candy that are left over after trick-or-treating might be caught by surprise if they, yeah.
The package said, it said it's medical marijuana. The problem was, you look inside there and you said, my God, that's, that looks like candy. So if somebody had some in their home and they had, you know, some in a little ice tray or something, a kid could come along, you know, I would expect.
That's a parenting issue.
Yeah, I know. But I would expect it to be little green tablets that say C for cannabis or something like that, not look like candy, anyway.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Tara Frederick, West Acton. Although I'm, I love the idea of retail marijuana, I feel like it does way more good than bad. I respect the petitioners, and I think that it's, to me, there's, there's very little that's more sacred than the petition. And so I thank you for acting on this ban, even though it was a non-binding vote. So I appreciate that. And I hope that the ballot language, which has to go in pretty soon, is acceptable to the petitioners. Have you guys read this or looked at it? Has there been any coordination with the petitioners so that the intent of the petitioners is respected?
Tara, council is the source of the draft. It has to be legally appropriate. Concord passed, Concord has the same law firm as council. They passed a ban using pretty much the same language that we're proposing here. It worked in Concord. I think it'll work here, assuming that the voters come out. That's the, that's up to the voters, whether they feel strongly enough to come out and vote one way or the other on this, so.
Thank you. And the, and the draft language is, or is the final language, whatever it is, is available on DocuShare, so people can look at it? And if the petitioner has any problem, they can contact you?
Yes, I mean, we will probably be voting on that tonight, is my hope. The language is, and was in our packet and is available publicly and on DocuShare. It's very straightforward and makes very clear that it's a question on asking to ban all marijuana, recreational marijuana facilities and related businesses, essentially.
Thank you. And I love the idea also, oh, go ahead.
No, sorry. Sorry. That's my job. I chair this meeting. John, you may.
Yeah, I just, the, the, the language. Yeah, I just, the, the, the language that we'll be talking about tonight is identical to the Article Six non-binding resolution.
Thank you.
Language.
Thank you, John.
I love the idea of limiting the types of things that are sold that the community is concerned about, and I'll put a bid in for limiting the number of pizza shops, nail salons, and hair salons. I also think that if we're going to be banning stuff, we should ban cigarettes, alcohol, and weed killer, and other toxins that end up in our kids' mouths through the use on lawns and whatnot. And my last question, oh, wait, I also want to put in a bid for the special permit, so that if there's zoning, if the ban fails and there's zoning to require a special permit application, so people who are concerned can come and express concerns about ours, et cetera. And then my last question is, ah, is it a fifty-one percent vote at the ballot?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, and at the town meeting, it's a two-thirds vote, is that correct?
No, I think, oh.
Because it's zoning.
Majority.
It's zoning.
Well, zoning's two-thirds, I don't know, Roland, is this, is this one though for adopting, the, the ban would be a bylaw, so that's, I think, just. I think it's a majority, right?
Only zoning has a two-thirds majority, when it comes to the ban or a general bylaw, I think it's, it's a simple majority.
Fifty-one percent, yeah, so I think the ban would be fifty-one percent, any subsequent zoning would be two-thirds.
Yeah, it's fifty percent plus one.
Plus one, yeah. Not fifty-one. Okay, anybody else?
I'm Ellie from Acton here. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, put together this complicated documentation, multiple articles, especially the ballot ban article and the bylaw, general bylaw change article. It's same language as the citizen petition, thank you for honoring the citizen petition in full spirit, thank you.
Thank you, Ellie.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
One more. In case the ballot bans fail, we hope the zoning bylaw can be, can be made as strict as possible in the, you know, in the law, laws, yes.
Yeah, again, we have to work within, you can't make it too strict. But, so we have to kind of work within that, and as Peter noted, we'll go through a longer process to talk about the zoning bylaw language that would be proposed at town meeting, so there will be a lot more discussion on that, ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
My name is Li, I follow the drug way, and I was so scared about the marijuana, and if we cannot ban it, can I have a suggestions, put the retail store close to the Acton police station? Because I don't think it's a right thing, and, and if close to the police station, so people will know, it's easy for policemen to control that part, and also will remind the kids that it's not right, please, for kids. So, I have a lot of concerns, we love Acton, we want to make this as our home, but I really, really concerned of the marijuana. So, this is my suggestions, thank you very much.
Thank you, I think the practical concern with putting it next to the police station, the police station's surrounded primarily by residential, there's not a lot of business there, and what is is in the Kelly's Corner or nearby district, or not Kelly's Corner, but close to. And so, it's closer to the schools and other things, so our hope is to kind of put it further from schools and where, and the park and where kids are. I understand your point, but where the police station is in town is not really a, a fit area otherwise for marijuana.
I, I remember there is animal, animal shop or animal.
There's a veterinarian there.
Yes, and, yes, if we could negotiate with that place.
I used to take my cat there, I don't know that they want to sell it to marijuana.
Sorry, I'm just, maybe this is a silly question, but I just assure my really concern of that.
Sure, okay, thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else, so again, I think my main goal tonight is if we can approve the language as proposed for the ballot question, unless people had questions or concerns, with that, my only comment is to remove that last sentence in the first paragraph of the summary. Did anybody else, Peter?
Yeah, I just had one question about that, that's kind of minor, but I just wondered if we should advise people that if this passes, it still needs approval by town meeting, assuming this is going to be before a town meeting, in order to take effect. And, and I, you know, I don't feel strongly about it, but.
No, I think that's a good point, yeah.
It might let people know that there's another step that they should look forward to coming up and be prepared to participate in, you know.
And I think if we vote to approve the language tonight, we can still work out the, the summary, so if we note that we would change that by adding in a sentence that makes it clear that you would have to go to the, the town meeting, yeah, okay.
Although I assume that we're going to have things on the website that will make people know that they're connected. Anyhow, I'm going to move to approve the proposed ballot question, special town meeting warrant article regarding the ban with the modifications that Katie has described.
I second that.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, great, so that is approved, we will work now to start getting it all finalized and then ready for the ballot in November, and then we will continue to work on the zoning language, and Janet, we can talk about that offline. Okay, so next up is the related issue that we are going to call, as we've talked about, a special fall town meeting to talk about, among other things, marijuana. So, noting that we want to include the marijuana question on, as part of special town meeting, that meant that we need to have the special town meeting after the statewide election, which is November fifth, sixth? Sixth? So, we've coordinated with the school district, we would, wanted to confirm that we would have both the auditorium and the upper gymnasium available for overflow, as it was a large town meeting the last time we talked about marijuana, and we want to make sure we have adequate space this time. So, the problem is, there are a limited number of dates that are available, so I've outlined in a memo, and I will read the dates and then the concerns with each of those dates, and we can talk about what is the most preferable. So, the dates that were, that we received from the school district for when we could hold the special town meeting are November seventh, November eighth, November nineteenth, November twentieth, December third, December fourth, and December fifth. November seventh and eighth are the same week as the federal election, November seventh, I did not put this in the memo, but is also Dewali. So, there are concerns with that, and the town clerk has strongly advised not to try to do a town meeting and a federal election in the same week. It would be very difficult on staff to, to do that. November nineteenth and twentieth are during the week of Thanksgiving, nineteenth being the Monday, twentieth being the Tuesday. Our, my understanding is that the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week has now become the busiest travel day of the year, so there are concerns that if we ended up going a second night, that there would be little attendance, but if we felt like we could get everything done the first night, hopefully, most people are still in town for the Monday of Thanksgiving week. In regards to the December dates, the moderator is unavailable on December fifth, so we would want to look at December third and fourth. However, Hanukkah runs from December second to December tenth. So, I just wanted to get a sense from the board of what their preference was for dates. So, initial thoughts, John, over here, my God.
Yeah, I, I would, I could understand the town clerk's reservations about the seventh and eighth, and I think right before Thanksgiving is, is unwise. I would go with December third, and I think this is what you should keep in mind about Hanukkah, so it's not offensive. It's an eight-night, from my multiple religious background. It's, it's an eight-night celebration, the main night, the main night is the first night. The actual observance is settled, is celebrated with the lighting of candles at sundown, so that would be probably about five o'clock. These meetings are at seven o'clock, so it would really, it's, it would be the second night or the third night. You could have a celebration and still make town meeting, and it shouldn't be offensive.
Okay, thank you, Peter?
Actually, I don't know how accurate this is, I am not Jewish, I, my Apple Calendar has Hanukkah, it just has Hanukkah one day, but it says the third, which I assume means it starts on the third, even though this says it starts on the second, so I don't know whether that's the first night of Hanukkah or not, but.
When I looked up, it starts on the second, but I can, I mean, I can double check that now.
I think, let's see. It begins at sundown on the second, so that's the first night.
Yeah, Sunday, December second, okay. Probably my Google didn't lead me astray. Okay, so would you prefer those December dates, or?
Yeah, they sound like the best to me, I, I would say maybe even the fourth might be the best day, but the third or the fourth.
Okay, Janet?
Yeah, I, I mean, I was going to say, the only days that pop out are either the November nineteenth, the first day, you know, of Thanksgiving week, or the third or the fourth. And I'm glad John explained the Hanukkah holiday, I know, I had, I had Jewish friends who were pretty observant, and they said, oh, it used to be a minor holiday, and then it became a bigger deal because of its coincidence with Christmas, and, you know, I remember being very jealous of my Jewish friends, because they got presents every, well, yeah, fewer than you usually get on Christmas.
Joe?
What else would be on the town meeting warrant?
There's a couple of things, I know the Historical Commission is going to be proposing changes to the chapter and demolition delay bylaw. Potentially some stuff around Kelly's Corner, but unclear on that, so I think there's a few other things, John.
And then there's some water articles.
Yeah, well, if citizens call, you know, have a petition, there might be some citizens petitions as well, so. You know, you, you always want to, and I think we could hope that we will go one night. If the, I also do think it's going to be, if the ballot, if the ban passes on the ballot, I think it's a shorter potentially meeting in terms of the town meeting step, if it doesn't, it might be longer, so you never want to assume it will go one night, which is my concern with the Thanksgiving week night, you know, we hope it does, but, Peter?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't think the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee has made any decision, but I don't anticipate this being on the warrant. I mean, it's a money, it would be a money issue, the FinCom's not happy about that, and we don't usually bring them to fall town meetings, so.
I just want to make sure there wouldn't be anything.
It's not set in stone, but we're anticipating the annual town meeting.
April, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, questions or comments from audience members? Yes, ma'am? You just have to go to the microphone and say your name and address, please.
I'm Diana from West Acton. So, if the ballot fail, we can still overturn it by town meeting?
No, it has to pass at both, so if the ballot.
So, pass both?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so if ballot fail, will this article still go into the town meeting?
It would be on the warrant, and then we would have to decide, and we can have a discussion of that at some point, about whether we still have a vote at town meeting on that article, or if we pass over that and just vote on the kind of backup zoning articles or not.
All right, thank you.
You know, an, an important procedural piece to this is assuming the November ballot question passes at town meeting, for the ban to go into effect, the identical language has to pass at town meeting, so if you start amending the, the town meeting warrant article and saying, and eliminate cultivation, those types of things, it's, it voids out what happened on November sixth.
Right, if, I think our proposal right now, though, would just be to have the same language on the ban, it's a full ban, right, and I, I, often the moderator would not allow amendments because it has to be the same language for the ban, but that's the ban. If it fails either at town meeting or at the ballot, then we would go to the sort of backup zoning articles, if that makes sense, Peter?
Let me just ask why, why it would be on the warrant, I mean, I guess it's just too close, the, the November election is just too close, the warrant will already have been published. I mean, if the November election defeats the ban, why would we have it on town meeting?
Yeah, because we probably have already closed the warrant, I mean, if, if it, if it happens, if we're doing the December dates, then we might have time to pull it, and then we wouldn't have to do it, but we can make that decision then, but at this point, you know, we kind of keep it, and then either choose whether to pull it or to take no action on that when it comes up, and skip over to the next one, which is what we've often done with something like that. Okay, so I'm getting a sense that people want to do December third, call the special town meeting for December third.
Are you going to book both rooms, or both nights, or just the third and fourth?
Yeah, we book multiple nights, yeah.
Just, just to be on the same side, since it's so hard to get seats there and.
Oh, we'll book, we'll book every night we can get.
And then we keep December fourth if it should run over?
Yeah, so we would book both nights, so I think we need a motion to officially call the town meeting for that night, so.
Go ahead.
Move to have the town meeting December third with the following date, December fourth?
Seven.
Okay, so we've moved to call a special town meeting for December third, and a second night on December fourth if needed. Motion made by Janet, second, or by Joan, seconded by Janet. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great, okay, and we previously did consent, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
We can sit here all night.
I just need one of you to say second.
Second.
Thank you, Peter, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?